Good evening. Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Bellingham, Watcomb County's candidate forum for members, for candidates for the Linden School Board. My name is Annette Holcomb and I will be your moderator this evening. The land that we stand on is the traditional ancestral territory of the Lummi and Nuxak people, the original inhabitants of Washington's northernmost coast and southern British Columbia. Since time immemorial, they have celebrated and cared for their land and waters to perpetuate their way of life. Please join me in deep gratitude for their ongoing wisdom and guidance as we take a moment to honorate, honor their ancestors and acknowledge the past, present, and future Lummi and Nuxak people as the original inhabitants of this land. Our media partners tonight are the Salish Current, the Ferndale Record, the Northern Light, the Linden Tribune, and K M R E eighty-eight point three FM community radio. We thank them really sincerely for their support. Founded in nineteen twenty, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government. To that end, the League works to acquaint people with their candidates, to increase their understanding of major public policy issues, and also to influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League never endorses a candidate or a political party. Membership is open to men and women over the age of sixteen years. We encourage you to join or to look at what we are doing by looking at our website. It's easy to join there. Tonight's forum is for candidates for the Linden School Board, and there are four positions on the ballot this fall. District position number one has Kush Far running for unopposed, and we have not invited her to participate. All the other candidates for positions two, three, and five were invited to come. Let me introduce who we have here tonight. Danny Martinez is a candidate for position number two. Mr. Martinez will be leaving early, and we're going to try to get in as many questions before he has to leave. Nick Saka is also running for position number two, and he notified us just a short time ago that he was unable to come. He is out of the city. For district position three, we are happy to welcome David Visz, and his opponent, Jim Verberg, is not participating. There is no reason given. For district position five, candidates are Kenneth Spin Owsley, who is not able to participate due to a previous engagement. Doris Smith is not able to be with us, but she has provided a statement that I will share with you soon. The Linden School District Board has five members. School Board has fundamental governance responsibilities that fall into four major areas: vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. The Board provides overall governance of the Linden School District, and it fulfills the following functions: responsible governance, creating conditions for students and staff success, setting high standards for student accountability and student learning, and community engagement. The Board members are elected for a four-year term. We'll be following some specific rules this evening. There will be no opening statements. Instead, the introductory question is tailored to elicit the kind of a response that you would get with an opening statement. Candidates, you will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question, and we will have a chance to make a one-minute closing statement. The order of questions and closing statement will be alphabetical by your seat, position two and then position three, and I will alternate who speaks first during the question time. We have a timer. Her name is actually Judy Hopkinson, but you can't see her face, and she will be tracking the time for us. The background will flash yellow when there are fifteen seconds left, and it will change to red when your time is up. We ask that you stop talking at that time. Ask you to be respectful to the time allotted so that we can get through as many questions as possible. So with that started, are you ready, Judy, for timing?
I'm ready.
Great, okay. As I say, candidates, you're going to have one and a half minutes to respond. And the first question is, are there particular issues motivating you to serve on the school board? Please explain. Candidate Martinez, you may speak first.
Yeah. Great question, particular issues. For me, one of the biggest things that has driven me to get involved is I've got kids in the school now. I've been a lifelong resident. I've gone through the school system. And now on the other side, I've got three little kids. I've got a seven-year-old, a four-year-old, and a three-year-old. And so I want to be an involved parent, and I want to be informed. And one of the biggest things that I'm passionate about is communicating with our community, with parents, grandparents, and community members who care about Linden and want to make sure that regardless of if it's budget stuff or it's policies or anything, that it's being well communicated with people. So that's one of my biggest, my biggest things and reasons for running. I'm also passionate about ensuring that our kids are safe. I think that we live in a world where there is a lot of, there's a lot of hopelessness, which leads to a lot of bad decisions being made by, by just people that are just struggling. And so for me, I want to ensure that our community is safe. And lastly, I want to ensure that I can do my part in working with other people to make sure that our academics are exceeding where we're currently at. I pride myself in being a graduate of Linden, but I know that there is a, 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 the sky's the limit for our academic growth. So I want to ensure that our kids are succeeding.
Thank you. Candidate Visz, your response?
Yeah, I come in with no real issues at all. I'm really excited about just recently us, us setting forward an improvement to the facilities. I'm, I speak really positively about our school, about our teachers, about administration. We have great kids. We have great parents up here in Linden. And a lot of people moved to Linden because the schools are so good. We've obviously got great success in, in sports and other, other things. Our facilities are lacking. And, and so, you know, one of the things that I do want to see us push through is, is building a twenty-first century necessary high school. I want to see us make improvements to a couple of aging elementary schools to bring them up to standards, to, to really take good care of our physical house. And, you know, we're living in a time post-COVID with changes in how we finance schools, and we're, we're facing a deficit model. So I think, you know, really doing a good job of stewardship with the funds for our taxpayers, but really ultimately offering fantastic schools and great opportunities and diverse opportunities for our students is really the key.
Okay, thank you. I have a statement from candidate Doris Smith, who was not able to come. And at this time, I'd like to share that with you. As a school board member, I would focus on three key areas. First, parents need to be more involved in education and need to have a greater say in the curriculum. Parental involvement can make a huge difference in children's motivation to learn. Second, our young people deserve an adequate academic foundation. By this, I mean a mastery of the basic academic subjects: reading, writing, math, science, history, and civics. Third, school district residents have a right to know how their taxes for education are being spent. Spending on providing an adequate academic foundation should be priority. If elected, I would advocate for these three changes to improve the quality of education in Linden. I sincerely appreciate your vote, Doris Smith, for position five. Okay. Um, our next question, and you will go first with this candidate, this. The question is, under what circumstances, if any, would you support a book being banned from your district's libraries?
I'm not excited about books being banned from our libraries at all. I think our libraries have to be age-appropriate. And, but I've joked with my wife and with friends that, you know, I should be wearing a T-shirt that says, "Name me a time in history when the good guys were banning books." I'm not in favor of banning books. I'm in favor of the freedom of people to choose whether they want to read the books or not. Again, I don't think we should be overexposing our young, young children to things that are over-sexualized or, or inappropriate as to age. Once kids get into high school, they're very close to being adults, and, and it's really up to their parents to, to monitor what books they're reading and what books they're, they're not reading. So again, I think age-appropriate to, to the elementary school, to middle school, in high school, they become responsible. They have access to all kinds of information on the internet at any time. And, and book banning, in my opinion, is just a bad idea, and I'm not for it.
Candidate Martinez, your response?
As a father of three young kids, one of the things that I try to do is make sure that I'm involved in their lives. And so I think that the primary people that are needing to be involved in decisions like what books are read are the parents or guardians of these students. It needs to be, the material that's presented to these kids needs to be age-appropriate. I am a firm believer in that. I, I agree with what David said, that there is some material that's overly sexualized. It doesn't need to be presented to elementary school children. I think that parents should be aware of what their kids are reading. I think that we need to teach history, not try to cover up some of the bad things that have happened in our nation's past. So, but we need to teach the full scope of, of, of our history, of our world history. So I'm not in favor of any of those books being banned. But when it comes to certain material, again, more specifically, things of sexual nature, there are, there are certain books that should not be read by elementary school kids and even by high school kids and middle school kids. If they choose to check these books out, parents should be aware because ultimately it's up to mom or dad or grandma or grandpa, whoever's guardian of, of these students, to say, "Yeah, I think this is a great idea," or "This is not a good idea." So that's where I would stand on that.
Okay, thank you. The next question, and candidate Martinez, you'll answer first on this. The superintendent of Olympia Public Schools announced their intention to bring back community police officers to campuses to improve safety for the students. What steps would you take to improve safety for your students?
I think that's a great, I think that's a great response. I am all in favor for having a, a, an officer on campus. I understand that there are some, some people that might be put off by that just because of life experiences or the way that media portrays some of our officers, and nobody likes a bad officer, as bad officers don't like bad officers. And so I think that it's essential with the state of the world that we currently live in. I think that as well, we can't just ignore the, I mentioned the opening statement. There's a hopelessness that is, that has taken over our young people. I work with teenagers. I'm a youth pastor, and so for the last decade of my life, I've dedicated my life to working with these kids. So I see it. I'm going to see it tonight. These kids come through these doors, and, and they're looking for a place of refuge. So I think addressing the, the mental health aspect of that is, is super critical as well. But I'm all in favor of having officer, an officer on campus.
Candidate Visz, your response?
So I would, I would disagree in that too often what I've seen, and, and Danny, I agree with you on so much. I would disagree in that what I've seen happen is you end up with a glorified mall cop that makes people feel good, that there's somebody there. You might or might not have a weapon. I would much rather address the question of, of security by having an improved high school that has a single point of entry and capacity for lockdown, and that's a much broader overall safety measures. We need to have appropriate cameras and use of cameras so that we keep bad people away and, and keep our schools very, very safe. Linden's high school right now has approximately thirty or thirty-five points of entry, and it, it's impossible for it to be made safe. And we've had local police come and walk through it, and, and you know, it's just, it's truly an impossible situation. So I would hope that we don't have to get to the place where we have on, on campus armed security people, and there's better ways to address the security issues for the, for the children. Security is crucial, and everything we've done in this proposed bond for both the elementary schools that we're improving and the high school are really designed for that improvement of security.
Thank you. Um, the next question is that graduation rates and academic achievement vary among different student populations. How do you plan to address these disparities and improve overall student outcomes? Candidate Visz, can you respond first?
Sure. We just spent about four hours at, at a, at a retreat, a workshop, talking about what are the markers that we're going to use. And honestly, COVID derailed some of that, looking at what are the standards and what are the markers we're going to use at third grade and fifth grade and, and high school graduation rates and reading performance in ninth grade, all those things. We are improving. We have a really strong graduation rate in Linden. We've just adopted some fantastic new and, and science-based reading curriculum that we're hearing great things about. We're using technology fantastically, which will enhance young readers. A key marker is can children read appropriately at third grade? And can they read at third grade level? Because if you're not teaching them how to read well in math, with all of its reading involved and other areas, they're not going to succeed at. So doing what we did with clever touch, doing, doing what we did with the, with the new curriculum for elementary reading is going to give us dividends and results.
Thank you. Candidate Martinez, your response?
Yeah, the, the question is, is not an easy one to answer, and I don't think that there is a particular, you know, silver bullet, if you will, to fix this. I think it has to start from an elementary level, and I think Director David addressed it well. Our students need to be able to learn to read. My, I'm, I have a first grader that comes home, and he's learned to love books, but that's something that me as a parent, that I've made a, an effort to, to expose him to the joys that can come from reading. And not just that, but teachers have partnered with me as a parent to encourage reading. I, I can't tell you how happy I was when my son is able to read his first book. It's, it's amazing. Now, I understand that we've got students that come from different life situations. Not everyone has a mom or a dad or grandma, grandpa that's going to be intentional about reading. So I think equipping our teachers to be able to have the right tools. I'm the new kid on the block, so I'm able to learn and work with current directors and administrators and teachers who, this is their wheelhouse, and to see how is it that we can continue to empower our students to succeed and empower our parents to feel like they're capable of helping their, their kids and their grandkids to, to succeed.
Thank you. Next question is, how do you plan to respond to parents who want specific changes in the school curriculum? Candidate Martinez?
I think that with every single parent and community member, it's important to listen to them. Whether I agree with them or disagree with them, we have to be open to dialogue. I think that one of the worst things that we can do is just shut someone down simply because we have differences, whether it's political ideologies or just different worldviews. I think that there are certain curriculums that we need to keep out of our schools that are not beneficial for our kids, that are teaching things that will not prepare them to be career or college-ready. And so for some of those issues, I'm more than willing to issue. On the flip side, I understand that there are some issues with the social welfare of our, our students that parents are very concerned about. And I think we need to listen to those parents. So one of my biggest things is communication with all our community members. So my, my heart is to listen to every parent, every garden, every student, every day, and regardless of, of how similar or how different we are, but there are certain curriculums that we, we don't need to be teaching our kids. I want to see our, our community continue to thrive and succeed, and I believe that that is only by, it's by enabling our kids to be career and college-ready. So that was where I would stand with that.
Thank you. Candidate Visz, your response?
Yeah, can you restate the exact form of the question, please?
How do you plan to respond to parents who want specific changes in the school curriculum?
So I think there's a misunderstanding that the school, it lives in isolation and doesn't seek input from parents when it comes to curriculum choices. That's simply not the case. When we make major changes in curriculum, we invite parents to participate, and we have a sizable parent group that is, is involved in curriculum studies. So in a way, it's a misleading question. It's, it's assuming that we've got parents that don't like what the curriculum is. They're, they're free to, to be involved in, in curriculum adoption. And again, with the, with the vocabulary and reading curriculum that we just undertook, we looked at a broad variety of choices. We invited parents in to, to examine what those, what that curriculum looked like. We obviously consulted with teachers and looked at what was best practices. I think science-based curriculum is, is a way to, to go in the future and, and curriculum that gets results of advancement with, with children. So Danny's right. The answer is communication, communication, communication. And we're not trying to hide anything from anybody. The doors are open to see what we're doing, and I just encourage parents to be involved. I think the best students are the, are the students that have parents that do want to advocate for them and are interested in seeing great results for all the children.
Thank you. The next question is concerning mental health and the well-being of students. This is a growing concern, and I wonder what initiatives you will advocate for to support students' mental health? Candidate Visz?
Danny has mentioned a couple of different times the hopelessness that kids face. I am a firm believer, and many of my friends have heard me argue this. Our drug addiction problem is a direct result of hopelessness. It is people checking out from a hopeless situation and saying, "I'm going to go on a three-day bender because it's rational, because what I'm in is so bad." So we've, we've got to give them hope for a, a, a good future. We got to give them an opportunity to see that there's an opportunity for them to have a great career, to get onto a great college, to be really equipped to go to that. I don't want to message and over-message on this school, but depression is caused by a number of different things. Hopelessness is part of it. Dark, dingy circumstances where you're spending eight hours of your day without any direct sunlight, which is essentially what's happening at our high school. It is dank and dark, and we need to improve that school to twenty-first century standards with big, beautiful windows that are appealing for children to be there, that want to be there and are going to then excel. And so it, it really is an answer, and we've heard parents talk about it. Solving our mental health problem, which we see mostly in, in, in middle and high school, a new facility is going to, is going to be a big piece of that. People are going to be proud to be in that school.
Thank you. Candidate Martinez, your response?
Do you mind restating the question one more time for me, please?
The mental health and well-being of students is a growing concern. What initiatives will you advocate for to support students' mental health?
Man, that is something very close to my heart. I've got, you know, I've got a little, not a little kid, but I've got a sixth-grade boy just peering through there, looking at what I'm doing. And I, I work with these kids every, every week and day in and day out, and I, I see the, the, the struggles that many of them go to. So for me, one of the biggest things is to be, I, I love being involved and active in their lives. And so for me to be elected is, I'm already involved in the schools, and so to be involved in their lives and to be an influence with them. But I think empowering students to be that change within their school is huge. When you give students a, a role and responsibility that, that says you can be more than, than what you are, I think that, that does help. When I visited the high school, I went to go visit my old counselor, and I asked her, "What's a group that's struggling the most in the high school?" And I was, I was taken aback by her answer. She says, "More than any other group, Hispanic males are the ones that struggle the most." And so for me, I thought, well, I, I was that Hispanic male that struggles to graduate. In fact, I did struggle to graduate. Later on, I was able to turn it around, but for me, it's just being able to encourage these students that there is a possibility for a future. Maybe you're not destined for four or eight years of university, but we need to encourage career and technical education as well so that these kids can succeed.
Thank you.
Would it be possible, would it be possible for each of us to have an additional thirty seconds on that question? Because we missed one piece that's really important.
Sure.
I'm happy to give Danny the same, the same time. Danny, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
One of the things we have in Linden is the Be the One Mentorship Program, and it's a fantastic program that Danny and Nancy McCarnas started. They've brought it out to Ferndale and other places now. And it is a, just a tremendous program for mental health. It, it, it links up people with a mentor to, once a week, spend an hour with them. And then the other part I wanted to cover is we have great mental health counselors, and, and our, our counseling staff is fantastic, and so they can see those things on the front end.
Okay, thank you. And another thirty seconds for you?
Yeah, for me, I would reiterate the importance of Be the One. I was involved in that for two years early on, and, and I can't tell you how rewarding it is just to pour into the life of one student. And so just to encourage community members and continue to raise awareness. In fact, Lisa, she heads this up right now, and she had emailed me asking if I knew anyone because they're in need of, of mentors. And so for, for community members to walk alongside these students is huge. They, they feel seen, they feel valued, and, and that makes a, a world of difference with mental health. And so I can't stress the importance of that enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think I have time for one more question, and then your closing remarks, especially since candidate Martinez, you do have to leave for your other commitment.
Yes.
So our last question is, what is the vision for education? Excuse me, what is your vision for education in your district? And how does it support the economy and quality of life in the community? Candidate Martinez, you can go first.
The vision that I have for our specific community is that we have students that are graduating, and they can read, and they can write, and they can do arithmetic, and they can get a job, and they have life skills. I, I am, I'm a firm believer that what we teach in our high schools is what translates over into our society. And so our, our students that we, that we produce from Linden High School, they need to be able to hold down a steady job. They need to be able to have basic life skills. And so if we, as a school, can empower these kids to graduate, and not just graduate, but to feel competent enough to succeed in the real world, I think that we're going to, our, I mean, the possibilities are endless. So I'm a dreamer, and I have big hopes for our community. And as a, you know, I talked about the Hispanic males. For me, I, I want to, I want in, you know, in four years for that to change. I, I don't want our, our, our guys to struggle. I don't want our girls to struggle. I don't want anyone to struggle to graduate. And so my vision would be to see our students empowered and to feel like they can succeed in, in life after high school.
Thank you. Candidate Visz, your response?
He's right on the money there. It takes a whole community. It takes a community of, of teachers and administrators and parents and, and coaches and mentors and school board members. But the key to all of that is, is students who are wanting to work hard. So we've got to show them that work hard, hard work really does pay off. Hard work, whether you're trying to go to college or university, whether you're trying to get a scholarship to play sports, whether you're wanting it to get a job right out of school. So our, we have to transition to doing a much better job of, of teaching broad-based CTE classes so that kids come out career-ready. And our, our logo, our, our statement is, every kid, every day, every student, every day, every classroom. And we need, we need to do that and, and continue to be creative in using technology so that the best and brightest can move forward and the ones that are struggling can get a good education and a basic education. I formerly was a bankruptcy attorney for a number of years. We need to teach kids not just how to balance their checkbook, but how to be smart economically. And, and so that when they get that good job, they're not being taken advantage of financially. And, and so that when they get that good job, they're not being taken advantage of financially. So financial literacy is really important. Reading is really important. We want to create good, solid citizens who we're proud when we say that's a Linden graduate. Uh, that's the, that's the answer, because kids.
Thank you. So um, you now have an opportunity to do a closing statement. And that is just one minute's time. Um, candidate this, would you like to go first?
I can go first. Uh, schools are a crucial part of every community. And it, it is, like I said earlier, teachers and staff and administrators. But the most important, parents uh, who care about their children, the most important are children. We have to do all of our decisions about what's best for children because kids matter. Um, I struggle with whether I was going to say this or not. I'm doing it tongue-in-cheek. I'm on record against cat litter boxes in school. Now, that's a joke. Listen, there's no cat litter boxes in schools anywhere. I'm more against people who are selling that false narrative out there on the internet. Because it's not happening. We have bigger and better things to do. And it's, it's being propagated by people who are not for public education. We need great public education. We don't need distractions. We need to provide great opportunities, great facilities, great instruction, great curriculum, and we'll get great results. We have a great school here in Linden.
Thank you. Candidate Martinez, your closing remarks?
Oh, first off, I'd like to say thank you to uh, the League of Women Voters for the invitation, for the time and uh, just for putting this on. There, one of the main things that I want to close out and say is, um, I have experience being through the schools. I have experience with the struggles. And now on the uh, the other side, I have experience as a father. And I've experienced without a lessons. And so for me to um, to, to come on the board would be a, a, a huge asset. I, I bring a good temperament. I bring the ability to work with the board, to listen to people who are, have different opinions in me. I have the um, the, the heart for service and honesty and integrity and, and a commitment to the school. And I do bring just basic common sense leadership. Um, so my petition to everyone is to vote for me as a candidate who will uh, to listen and communicate and really serve our community um, in the best way you can. So, thank you.
Thank you both. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank both of you for coming. I am sorry we didn't have a full house here, but I know people's lives are very busy and I really value my opportunity to hear from you. And I'm sure that others who have watched this program in the coming two weeks or so before the election, will be glad to hear from you as well. Um,
Can I share very quickly? Can I share very quickly? We talked before the thing started about whether there would be endorsements for each other. I think the voters need to know that, that Danny has been endorsed by myself, by Mr. Owsley, Spin Owsley, a- as well as by Tanya Hickman. And he's got the endorsement of, of three existing board candidates. And I think he's really got the temperament. He'd be a great, great board member.
Thank you, David. I'd like to say one more thing. I think that with David, he has all the experience that we need. We're uh, we're coming at it, if, if I get elected and Kush is new. And, and so all of this, we, we need someone with experience. And so for me, I'd endorse David as a uh, director. And so I really hope that our community can see the value in that. Uh, David's got a great heart and has been a good mentor for me going through this whole process and understanding all of that. And so I'd encourage people to vote for David as well.
It's uh, thank you both. It was a pleasure to have you here tonight. Um, to, for everybody, remember that your ballots will be mailed. It's actually today is mailing day. Um, and your ballot must be postmarked and in the ballot drop box before eight PM on November seventh. Please remember to sign your ballot envelope. And if mailing by postal service, we recommend that you mail early. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.